I have no idea. Mark, is that part of the diet? Is he working? Sure. 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 Oh my God. I don't know who it was. Oh. See, that's one of the things you always get. One thing I've learned. I just have. Yeah, don't screw anything else up the mouth and find somebody to help. But yeah, not the person who gave the... They're gonna do it for us all this year. Um, it's coming together kind of too late for us, so I don't...
Yeah, it's always a thought.
So, the other one's very organized. It's like, hey, everybody practice on Wednesday, all the games on Saturday, plan it out, clear your schedule. Everybody knows how we're doing it, so...
Good juice. Good juice. I lost one, right?
Good. Good, yeah, everybody seems to love. We do well.
Where did they go? Oklahoma. Fifteen six. How many hours? We start at four. All right. Then Mike has his test.
Call us, be in order, and we'll start with the pledge and release.
I pledge to the United States of America and to the Republic of which this stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We had an executive session before the meeting from 4:30 until now. Uh, we discussed two personnel issues and two law, two lawsuits, okay? Public comments for agenda items only. Go ahead, Mrs. Kurtz.
Can you talk about the employee handbook?
Yes.
Would you please address the people that have city cars that take them home at night? And what are their limitations for using those cars?
Okay. Any other comments? Yes.
Debbie McLean, DuBois, I was just curious about something. I saw, um, one of the things is about the property maintenance for high grass. And I was curious as to how much, uh, how many citations were issued this year as opposed to last year? And how much money was made on those citations this year as opposed to last year? I was just curious, because I know...
It's okay, we'll talk about that when we answer that. I'll mark that down here.
Thank you.
Dollars and what else did you want to know? Like, how much? I'm not sure we're gonna know that. And the amount, the number of fines, number of people.
Yes.
Okay. If we have that information, I will get it to you.
Okay.
Okay, anybody else? Okay. Let's go with, start with approval of the minutes.
I can motion to approve the city council's amendment,令， 12/24.
Second.
Property move second. Any questions on the motion?
Deets?
Yes.
Augenbaum?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
Gelfen?
Yes.
Reesinger?
Yes. General fund?
I'll make a motion to approve the auto draft and the amount of $74,754.58.
Second. Property move second. Any questions on the motion?
I just want to make a statement, I guess, with the auto draft for the public is that we all are going through these. And I know Sean is doing a great job with, um, figuring out what money is going where and cutting costs. Sean is a pretty, um, astute man with the money. So, we truly are all asking questions with the auto draft and the general fund on the invoices. What's every meeting, we have questions for him. So, we are working on cutting costs where we can. That was it.
Any other questions on the motion? Vote on the motion.
Deets?
Yes.
Augenbaum?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
Gelfen?
Yes.
Reesinger?
Yes. General fund?
Auto draft. Auto draft.
Auto draft, sorry. Do that one first.
I'll make a motion to approve the auto draft and the amount of $74,754.58.
Second. Property move second. Any questions on the motion?
I just want to make a statement, I guess, with the auto draft for the public is that we all are going through these. And I know Sean is doing a great job with, um, figuring out what money is going where and cutting costs. Sean is a pretty, um, astute man with the money. So, we truly are all asking questions with the auto draft and the general fund on the invoices. What's every meeting, we have questions for him. So, we are working on cutting costs where we can. That was it.
Any other questions on the motion? Vote on the motion.
Deets?
Yes.
Augenbaum?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
Gelfen?
Yes.
Reesinger?
Yes. General fund?
Motion to approve the general fund and the amount of $307,437.32.
Second. Property move in second. Any questions on the motion? Vote on the motion.
Deets?
Yes.
Augenbaum?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
Gelfen?
Yes.
Reesinger?
Yes. Penvest?
Make a motion to approve the penvest, $1,956,277.06.
Second. Property move second. Any questions on the motion? Vote on the motion.
Deets?
Yes.
Augenbaum?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
Gelfen?
Yes.
Reesinger?
Yes. And again, all those, all those invoices are on the website. If any, I'm surprised somebody doesn't pick something out and ask us about it. But they're all on the website and you can, you can look at it. Not that I would, you know, don't, don't just start picking. Uh, new business. Non-uniform minimum municipal obligation. This is for the pension. This is the amount that the city has to pay into the employees' pension plan. And this is just the non-uniform ones, okay?
Correct, yeah. And this has to be approved by the governing board for September 30th each year. So, this will go into the 2025 budget. Um, really, it's a factor of what they think the costs are gonna be and what payroll is and what the contributions from the employees are. So, that amount for 2025 is $955,127.
Any motion to approve?
Second.
Property move second. Any questions on the motion? I have one. That is an astronomical number and should not be that high. It, it's that high because of what has been done to the pension in the past. Um, I'll let you ask a question. Normally, we would not ask a question right here, but I'll let you ask.
Thank you. What was the amount last year?
Six, about 600 and some thousand. I believe so, yes. Yeah, clearly increased.
Yeah. Now...
Do you have it? I'm just curious, um, is this the expected minimum amount every year?
Oh, no, it goes up.
It goes up?
Yeah, I did a, I had a, um, actuary report done over the next 10 years. And if the max it hits is about 1.4 million. Then it kind of levels off and drops down, back down to a million.
As people retire.
As people retire, it goes up. And then you have new employees in that aren't gonna retire for a while. The whole, there's a, there's a lot of math in these.
Yeah, it's based on rate of return, too. So, if we have good years, um, we see better dividends, and that could change also.
And, and we're basing, this, this MMO is based on us projecting to get 8% off return on our investment in the, uh, and, and that is a huge stretch. It should be somewhere around three and, six and three quarters would be a good number. And we're at eight. Okay? Yes, sir.
And Mayor, can you just clarify? I know you gave it what I think is a good answer, but just to clarify, you mean somebody didn't pay in the correct amounts in the past? How do you explain that to the taxpayers, I guess? Is that the answer?
It was changed. It was changed from, uh, as, as each employee originally would get 1.7% of their pay per year, okay? Or vested, 1.7% a year, okay, vested. And it was changed at 2.5, okay? So, that takes it from like 36, 37 years of employment, 33 maybe? I didn't, I...
Yeah, I understand.
It's, yeah, it's a very complicated question.
But it's just a short change of money going into the, and it does change.
It, it, was that changed? It was changed from 50% to 90% for a little bit a while. So, people are, some people are gonna be getting 90% of their pay when they retire, okay? That was done for, that shouldn't have been done, but it was done.
Thank you.
And we have to live with it.
And just any employee hired after January 1st, 2013, uh, is back to that 50% of their salary.
Of their salary. And, and they're still at 2.5. In 20, they put 20 years in, they get half their pay, which is a lot, too. So, it's, and like I said, normally, I would not let questions in the door in this thing. But this is a lot of money, and it's gonna be continued for a lot of years. So, I think it's very important that you, you know, if you get a handle on it. Yes, sir.
So, I know a lot of times, because fixed pensions, a lot of places aren't doing it like they used to. They got away from, a lot of them have gone to 401Ks and what have you.
Yes.
Uh, to, I think, mutual benefit. Uh, and I don't know particular than how you would possibly switch over or...
We are not allowed to.
Phase, you can't phase out of the one.
No. Third-class city required, my state is required to have a defined benefit package, which is...
You can't have defined contribution.
Yeah, you can't. I mean, you can't have defined contribution. Yeah, it's, it's, it's just how we have to do it, unfortunately.
Okay.
Yeah. Uh, schoolteachers and government, that's pretty much all they have anymore. Okay. Any other questions on the motion from here? Vote on the motion.
Deets?
Yes.
Augenbaum?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
Gelfen?
Yes.
Reesinger?
Yes. Uh, healing the planet grant award. I'll do this one. Well, we've received a grant from Giant, which is the parent company of Martin's. Um, they gave us $4,000 to plant trees. Nothing better than that. Um, and this restrictions are, which are great restrictions, and they have to be on public land, and they have to be native trees to Pennsylvania, which they're gonna be planting maple trees on Maple Avenue in the right of way. So, we're conforming to their, for their requirements. But that's very nice of them, and we thank them extremely. That was very nice of them. Um, they do this every year, and it, it'll help out. There'll be, gonna be a lot of, probably 40, 50 trees planted in the fall this year, okay? But that's, that, we want to thank them. DuBois area high school homecoming request.
Yep, we received a request for the 2024 homecoming parade and football game, uh, for Friday, October 4th. And they'd like to, like they have in the past, uh, have the parade route go from the senior high school to Mansell Stadium, which would involve closing Division Street and Beaver Drive at 5:45 PM for approximately 45 minutes. So, they're just asking for that approval as they have in the past.
With the police department assisting and same thing with the fire department as well?
Correct.
Take that motion.
Second. Property move second. Any questions on the motion? Vote on the motion.
Deets?
Yes.
Augenbaum?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
Gelfen?
Yes.
Reesinger?
Yes. Uh, then we have a new, new payroll account.
Yeah, so the purpose of this item is to request approval to open a new payroll checking account at S&amp;T Bank due to some fraudulent activity we had on the previous account. So, this is just simply switching over to a new account due to that, to that fraudulent activity. And additionally, we request approval of the four signatories on this account of Lisa Lebraska, David Volpe, Tom Noack, and myself.
Can you explain the fraudulent activity?
Yeah, we had a check washing incident. So, someone got our account numbers and wrote, uh, I think 13 checks, um, made out to different people in different amounts based on our account numbers. Luckily, the, the bank caught it. Uh, we were reimbursed any losses that we had, uh, but we didn't want to switch that account, so, since our numbers are out there.
I think Tom caught it.
Tom, you know what?
Tom checks the checking accounts every morning, and he, he caught that, called the bank.
Yep.
Yeah.
Did you find out you did it?
No.
Feds are probably still looking. There's so much of that, I doubt it.
Yeah, they were lower amounts, too. So, that sometimes makes it more problematic to raise the attention of some government officials.
I'll make the motion to approve the new payroll account at S&amp;T Bank.
Second. Property move in second. Any questions on the motion? Vote on the motion.
Deets?
Yes.
Augenbaum?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
Gelfen?
Yes.
Reesinger?
Yes. DuBois city employee handbook.
Yeah, so, um, when we originally passed the first version of the handbook, we did not, uh, get the input of both our non-uniform and our uniform, uh, police, uh, I'm sorry, our, uh, union folks. So, I'm requesting that we, uh, we rescind the previous approval of that handbook, um, and wait until we get those comments and incorporate them into a new handbook. We already did meet with, uh, the non-uniform folks and have some changes from them. And, uh, and we're just waiting to meet with the, the uniform to talk about any additional changes.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Property move second. Any questions on the motion?
Um, yeah, the vehicles for our employees.
Yes, we have one employee that has, uh, that does have a vehicle. Um, he is on call, um, that's why he has the vehicle, so he can take it to, uh, reasonably within, um, 25 to 50 miles from the city limits.
And we have two fire chiefs that have vehicles also, that the city pays for the gas and everything for.
Yep.
Got satisfied? Okay. Um, any other questions on the motion? Vote on the motion.
Deets?
Yes.
Augenbaum?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
Gelfen?
Yes.
Reesinger?
Yes. Downtown DuBois request, um, Charlie, you want to just...
Sure. It was right here. Yep. Um, Shirley, you're here, downtown DuBois. Um, just submitting our annual letter for our annual upgrades and hops event that has been taking place now for over a dozen years. Um, we're not requesting any street closures or anything. It's just more of a common courtesy of this event's taking place so that the police are aware and everybody's a little more mindful of...
People crossing the street.
Yes. And, um, especially when it's a wine tasting.
We understand. Chief?
Take the night off.
So, we are extending it an additional hour because last year, a lot of folks didn't have enough time. They were racing from location to location. So, it'll be from 4:00 to 8:00. Um, and we just wanted to sort of present it.
And I understand you have more, more places involved this year also.
More places involved, um, more stocks.
More stocks, yeah.
Yes. And we have a shuttle service set up.
Good.
As well.
Thank you.
So, yes.
Okay. We need a motion on that? I think we just...
Yep.
Okay, thank you. DuBois city fee schedules. We're gonna be going through some things here that are fines or registration fees or anything like that. We just want to review them, um, right now, so we, because it's been a while since I've been looked at, okay? So, we're gonna start with the vacant property registration.
Yeah, now, I can turn it over to Zach to talk a little bit about this, but, um, we, we've had some issues with collections on this, uh, this, uh, resolution. And we do have an option to potentially look at a third-party company to administer it for us, which would have much better success than we have. What it says is something that we're, we're looking into and getting some quotes and ideas together for that process. But Zach, I don't know if you just want to touch on what, what the current fee schedule is.
Fees or how they happen?
I don't know. I'm talking with my head. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
It goes by how many years vacant it is.
Somebody should have told you.
Yeah, less, less than one year, zero dollars. Um, if it's one year but less than two years, it's at 500, and this is an annual fee. Um, it's 1,000 from two to three years, and then goes to 2,000 from three to five years, and then over five, 3,500. And, uh, then an additional 500 per year in excess of five, oh, I'm sorry, of 10 years.
One of the problems with these fees are, they're not collected very often, are they? So, so I have, I have an abandoned building I'm not paying taxes on. I'm, I'm not cleaning up. I'm not doing anything with. I don't care how many, but find it all you want to. You know, I'm already not, it's already, it's already past that stage. So, we're, you know, this council's taking a real serious look at blighted properties and vacant properties that have been going on for years and years and years. Something that ain't nearly fixed up or that he tore down. Hey, we just, we're too good of a town to have that stuff laying around and sitting around. So, um, you know, anybody have any ideas or suggestions or anything?
Sean, is there, is something new to the city on this?
Go ahead.
Is there an ability to lean the property?
Uh, I'm not sure of that, Matt. We can check on that.
Lean the pro, put leans on a property? You do that now?
I know, we, we had a...
For non-payment?
We had a similar, we had a similar issue in Bethel Park. Um, we had an ordinance out there, had trouble collecting. Uh, we actually turned it over to a third party, um, for a very reasonable fee. They collected it and then paid us what our, what our fee schedule was. So, it worked out very well. Um, and we were very happy with their compliance ratio. It was like 85% or something, um, pretty, pretty significant.
What happens to ones that didn't pay or just let it sit?
I think after a period of time, they go to that lien process.
Well, so, I mean, if, if we leaned it for the, the, back to property registration fees, for example, if we leaned that, if it went through an upset sale, then we would, we would get to...
You would see, but that doesn't work because these, these are buildings that nobody even would bid on because they're, they have a mortgage on them. They have back taxes for five years. They have all these other liens on them. Who would buy that? You know, we have a hard time...
Well, I mean, the other, yeah.
Yeah, we have a hard time buying, getting that, doing anything with that property.
They have to get acquitted with the county. They have to move faster. We've had a vacant property...
You're talking about judicial sale.
With fees for years. There's a registration fee. There's, nothing has been collected.
Yeah. So, it's, it's, it's very...
Yeah, I mean, I, and I've seen it done with third parties. They can, but someone's being in the property, they're not concerned about much of anything.
No, they, they really don't care. We have, and we have how many? Six or eight, 10?
Probably a dozen.
A dozen?
Yeah.
Yeah. And some of them you don't see because they're in the neighborhoods, but we all see gibbys and we all see the carpet...
They don't register.
What's that?
They don't register.
Yeah. And, you know, we see, we see the carpet board, and we, we see those buildings that are, that we see all, all, all day. And we, something needs to be done with them, you know? And I'm not, I don't have all the answers. Yeah.
Um, one of the things I was kind of curious about on that, you said a little bit ago, that, um, they get behind on taxes and everything else. And then it's not financially reasonable for anybody to buy it at that...
Right.
Would the city be interested in working with a potential buyer in one of those properties where they would maybe waive some back taxes with a guarantee that they were gonna fix that property up and make it worthwhile again?
You can always go to the treasurer, you can always go to the county treasurer and make an offer on any of those properties.
Yeah, that's, once, once it goes to the county repository, that means it's not purchased in an upset or judicial sale. It goes to the repository, then that purchase price has to be approved by local, the local municipality.
Right, because we'd be giving up taxes. But we would give up our taxes in a second, and the county probably would. The schools are pretty tough on that, so we, you know, sometimes they don't do that.
Yeah.
How, how does that? Okay, so let's look at, let's talk about gibbys, okay? Um, and how long has it been empty?
Five years.
And how much, how much of the fines been? Just thousands?
Yeah, that'd be...
Thousands.
He's been fined, and, you know, now that he's deceased, it's not even, you know, who do I fine? Because it's still in his name.
So, so, can, can we use eminent demand to get that building?
It's on the upset sale this year. I don't know if somebody may be interested in it at the tax. I mean, that's coming up in September.
Oh, well, the tax has not been paid, though. Probably the same amount.
Three years minimum to be on the upset sale.
Three years minimum, okay.
Then if it's not, if there's no bids at the upset sale, then it goes to judicial and...
Yeah, it'll go to the private sale, and then you can bid any amount on that.
Right.
Last I checked, somebody in secondary was paying the taxes. Is that different?
They're not paying them anymore.
They're not paying them anymore.
When did they quit?
At least three years ago.
Three years ago.
At least three years ago.
Was it exact?
See, the thing is, though, it's likely to sell it at judicial sale because at that sale...
It's clear.
Liens and the other encumbrances, such as mortgages, et cetera, go away.
I bought two, I bought, but two properties at judicial sales.
Right. We gotta go through this process for the, the upset sale, or to get it to the judicial sale.
Right.
Yeah.
I put them back, I put a lot of money until I put them back on the tax rolls.
Yeah, only if there's no bids at the upset sale, we'll go to the judicial, so...
It's just, we need a, we need a solution. Um, making these higher, would that help anything?
I don't know. Getting compliances, I mean, I can get people to call me when I send out the registration for it.
Are there people that, are there people that are paying that fee?
I got one person that brought in the, the cash and paid, and that was four months ago, and he still hasn't touched the house. Said he would have it taken care of and better, you know, back livable condition, and four months and still hasn't touched it.
So, raising, raising those fees really would serve no purpose on this particular thing?
I, I think they're high enough with, you know, if they're vacant that long, or, you know, $5,000 to register it, that should motivate someone.
You'd think so.
And this isn't motivating.
No. The thing I would say is if you're gonna tear a building down, you can potentially use CDBG funds.
Right.
Or, or blank, yeah.
Yeah, we've done that.
Yeah, so someone might be more inclined by a vacant piece property that's already cleaned up after that's done. But that's just...
Yep. Anybody else have any comments on this particular item?
I'll just say that the third-party folks...
I think that's a good idea.
We'd utilize them, we'd work with the banks, too, if there's a mortgage on there. Um, so that's another route that, that they were successful in Bethel Park. They, the banks paid the registration fee, which helped them to get rid of the properties quicker also.
Right. Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
And I can tell you, too, I've worked with a few banks on foreclosures. They, they know our process, they know our fees, and they, they'll register them, and they have them back on the market within a year. I don't think the banks like that fee.
And that's what we intended, that's what we intended.
Make money, it's, it's to motivate.
Yeah.
Yep. Okay. So, it works with the banks, the banks have money.
That's why it might be good to lean the property, because the bank doesn't want to lean on property. That's why it might be good to lien the property, because the bank doesn't want to lien on property. Because that could, that could be reduced to judgment and then sheriffs, I mean, it.
Okay. Let's look at that, let's look at the ones we can lien also.
Yeah.
So like the ones that aren't registering, following the process, just go ahead and lien them for failure to block. Is that why we check the ordinance and make sure? If it's any ordinance, then we can just write the lien and follow it and.
Yeah, let's, let's start moving on these properties. We're serious. I live here. Should be nice. Anybody else have any comments on this particular thing? I think we should move away with the, do you want to need a motion for the third party or just do it?
We'll see what we, see what proposals we get and then we'd have to award a contract between the public.
Okay. Property maintenance for high grass. What are the fees for that?
So currently we're at 25 for your first offense, 50 for second, 100 for third and 300 for fourth. So our recommendation is to essentially double that, 50 for first, 100 for second, 250 for third and 500 for fourth.
Because it costs more than $25 to cut your grass, it's cheaper for them not to cut the grass. We need to make it more expensive. We want to make it cheaper to cut the grass. I said, we want the grass cut, we don't want the money, we want the grass cut. Anybody feel, do you want to make the first one higher than 50? Anybody?
Zach, what do you think?
That's the time I'm writing at 50, the first time anyway, just to try and motivate them. And then working with them, either cut it in half or, you know, if it's not a repeat offender or write it off.
There are people that get sick that you could, you know, there are special circumstances. One second. What's your process? If the grass is over six inches, what's your process right now?
If it's a repeat offender, whatnot, they get, I mean, a lot of times in summer when I'm out, they just get a ticket right on the door. Let them call me, let them, you know, whatever.
You don't notice anything, you just write the ticket if it's a repeat offender?
Yeah.
What if it's somebody that's maintained their yards for years and all of a sudden it's six inches?
I have a written warning form that I'll do the same thing with, leave out on the door, give them time, whatnot. That way it's all documented that we talked to them and that.
Okay, so we're pretty, we're pretty reasonable?
I try to.
I think so, pretty fair and honest. Anybody else have a comment on this?
Then what happens if they continually don't pay? Is there any?
Do you have people that don't pay? We put a lien on them.
They go to the magistrate, artifices citation. Once they don't pay the ticket, then it, you know, I can turn it over to a non-traffic citation for summary offense at the magistrate and so on.
Oh, they've actually, you guys have gone out with warrants and stuff for people?
Well, the thing is, if they don't pay their, if they don't pay at that level, if they're convicted of a summary offense, then it becomes a cost and fines issue.
Yeah.
So they're, it can be forcedful then by the, by the.
Yeah, I have a list of, I mean, Sean has a profile downstairs that he keeps for my warrants in case they come across these people that, you know, they pick them up, take them to the magistrate and so. We've done it, kicking and screaming, people don't, I mean, seems funny, you got to be taking away handcuffs because you don't cut your grass.
But it's been done, hasn't it?
Yeah, more than once.
More than once.
Well, they can be forced to pay too, because they can be incarcerated.
They don't. Sounds crazy. You know, I've been here for like a year and I've seen, seen employees go way out of their way to make people happy. We, I've seen us do things that we really shouldn't do, but we do it out of the goodness of, of, you know, citizens, stuff like that. But when you constantly don't obey the rules, we can be pretty tough and I think we should be. Do you need a motion to raise those?
We'd have to do it officially by the resolution ordinance, so yeah, just tonight's a discussion.
Do you need a, want to just know how everybody feels about it?
Yeah.
Jim, what do you think? Double them?
For the recommend.
What's that?
What John recommends?
Yeah, that's what.
Yeah, what's in here, that's fine. Jim, Jim?
Yeah, that's, I'm, I'm going with it.
You guys?
Yes.
Yeah, I think we are, okay. Same thing, property maintenance for snow in the sidewalk. Same procedure usually?
Same procedure. I sent out a lot of warning letters and that for snow. Open it at most before it gets to the point of having to write a ticket.
Yeah, and if it's, if it's zero, I mean, you're, you're pretty reasonable. You know, if it snows a lot and it snows a little bit more and stuff like that, you give people more break than they probably, than you have to.
I try to concentrate on like the boulevard, the downtown, you know, with the high school area, where I know the Penn State area, where there's a lot of people walking all the time, you know, the students. You know, the boulevard gets bad because of how big the boulevard is and then all that.
And you can shove when the plow comes through.
Yeah.
So then you're buried again. Yeah.
But the main arteries where I know a lot of people are walking all the time, that's where I try to concentrate out.
Okay, so really a safety thing, everybody should have sidewalks they can walk on. What are the fees for that right now?
That's the same because I use the violation tickets, so it's set with that violation ticket ordinance.
And your suggestion is the same?
Same, same thing.
Same thing, I think we're all good on that? Okay, all right. Building permits.
Building permits, we currently have a 30% administrative fee on top of PennSafe's fee schedule and that's for us to administer on that. We'd recommend increasing that to 35% and also our zoning fee was at 25 to 2950, depending on what the fee was. We recommend increasing that to $50 for that zoning permit.
Everybody okay on that?
Yes.
Yeah, good.
What's the 30%? 30% of what?
So it's PennSafe's fees, so PennSafe does the physical inspections, but Zach is our building code official, so he does a lot of the UCC compliance stuff. And Zach, I don't know if you can probably talk to her and I can.
Yeah, explain how, you're part of a permit.
Yeah, so I'm the first person that comes in, I, you know, go through all the permit applications with everybody, make sure they understand what requirements we need, well, how the process works, gather all the needed information, get a plan review by PennSafe, come back, process all the paperwork, issue the building permit card, the inspection checklist, everything like that. And then maintain all the records for the, for the, all the building permits. And like commercial stuff, we have to maintain them for the life of the building. Residential stuff, we have to maintain for life. So we're, you know, maintaining all these records and they keep space and.
A lot of your time.
Yeah.
But it's not 30% of the construction cost?
No, it is not, it's 30% of the inspection fee.
Can you quickly say, because I know some people aren't aware of some things you need a permit for? Can you quickly? Because I know people don't realize they need a permit for things and do it and then get a call or you show up and didn't know that they needed a permit.
Yeah, it's always better to call before you start a project and ask just to be sure. Because residential, a lot of stuff's exempt, but you know, any, even if you're replacing an existing porch or anything like that, if you're tearing it all off and rebuilding it, you need a permit for it. That's the biggest one that we get, that nobody will get permits for. So like porches over 30 inches, new or replacement, they need permits. If it has a roof over the porch, does not matter how high, it needs a permit. Even if it's an existing roof, you're not replacing it, you're replacing the porch underneath, you got to have a permit. Any additions, anything like that, I mean, that's pretty common there. Commercial, there's very limited that is exempt. Even like moving a cubicle inside an existing building, depends on the work that you're doing, you need a permit.
What about a pool?
Pools, you definitely need a permit. Anything more than 24 inches of water. Pool, hot tubs are included, like you even, you can bring a hot tub in on a truck, set it in your backyard, you need to have a permit for that. There's a light requirement and that, and it's for the safety of the community, it's not something that we're trying to make money on. This is, when you're dealing with water and pools and that, there's a lot of electricity out there. You got to plug a pump in, if it's not installed correctly, there, you'd be in some serious trouble.
And a pool does require a fence?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Sidewalk, putting in a new sidewalk?
New sidewalk requires a permit, that's just a simple one, that doesn't require the UCC permit or anything. That's set by local ordinance here.
Thank you.
Maybe you could put it on the website saying, hey, did you know you need a permit?
Also, I think we, I think we put something out in the water bill, like every year, I believe, goes out. So we'll just double those and then build. You guys okay with the 35%?
Yeah.
Suggested? Here's a big one, skill games.
Yeah, so skill games, we currently have $100 per game per year. So we're, you know, open to see what council wants to do with those fees, they should be increased, but we can have a discussion on that.
Discussion?
You could make it as high as you would like to for me, because I am totally against skill games in the community, we have way too many of them.
Zach, how many machines do we have in the city?
Somewhere around 75.
I don't know how, they're busy.
And that, that includes the clubs and bars that have, I didn't break it down to.
Right, but 75 game, that's a lot. How many, how many places? Tell us.
Probably 15. Yeah, 15 and 20.
Okay. Quite a bit. So the bars are regulated by the PUC? Yeah, and one of the bar doesn't seem, it's not the one we're having problems with.
Correct.
We're the clubs.
Correct, not clubs, yeah.
There's liquor involved, you don't have a problem. And chief, what kind of problems do they create for you?
I don't get a lot of suspicious people and people just around the area at 3:00, 4:00 in the morning and some people causing some problems.
See any under, PUC, anybody under 18 in any of them?
Haven't seen anybody under 18.
And are they, is there like an employee there all the time?
Not all the time, I don't believe so.
No employee, okay. I would assume they have cameras because they have machines and money, they certainly got a camera, yes sir.
And Mayor, I'm aware, I signed this, there was a lady downtown who brought a petition because somebody came right through her front door.
It's never been presented to us to my knowledge.
She said she had dropped it on.
Yeah, I brought it to Sean.
But I'm just saying, like, I think it's a real concern, anyone outside of a bar or establishment without the PLCB is a problem.
So according to the state, I believe we're pretty much allowed to do hours, number of machines. You know, there's a lot of things that can be done. Now, if somebody's already has one operating 24 hours as our council, are we allowed to say, hey, you're only allowed to be open 9:00 to 9:00 now?
That I have to look into honestly, I don't know, I mean, you can have an ordinance that modifies because we have no ordinance right now.
Talked previously about following the PUC hours.
Liquor controls weren't coming hours, as a suggestion.
Yeah, no, we do not have, we do not have a.
Planning commission gave you an ordinance to review Sykesville, passed an ordinance.
Huncy did?
Something, and we need a zoning situation.
It's a free for all.
Yeah, which we don't want.
You can regulate some of the zoning and we don't have anything.
I'm all for raising the rates on the skill games.
Do you have a suggested price?
You hit the nail on the head, $1,000?
I said, six months ago, I said, that's why we didn't, that's why I didn't vote for you for that bill, that ordinance, it needs to be a thousand bucks.
Yeah, and one of the things we were waiting for, the legislature was supposed to address the issue. So the legislation, legislators were supposed to address the issue in July, so that's why we were waiting to see how that turned out before we took it upon ourselves. So, yeah, there could be some, you know, legal liability, that's what we were waiting, hopefully they would address it statewide, because it's an issue everywhere, not just in Duaneville.
Philadelphia outlawed the machines, not allowed to have one in Philadelphia.
But I'd say you don't wait for the state, you don't know what's here, why don't they pass it?
I think council members are actively looking into a potential ordinance.
Yeah, we're looking into an ordinance. And, but like I said, the state said it would be done in July, but we need to move before that. We were kind of putting off till that and we should have known it wouldn't have been done. Yes, sir.
With the change in fees, at that time, can you structure hours and things more effectively too? And have that all come across at the same time?
That's going to be part of the ordinance.
Okay.
We already have a games ordinance, so we can, we can raise the, the fees for that because we just do a resolution to what we are.
That way it doesn't look like you're targeting a business, you're just, you're coming up with guidelines now that this is what you have to do.
Now, would that just impact the new gaming establishments or will it? The ones that are already here?
Yeah, that's a question I, that's a question I don't feel comfortable giving right now, I'd have to research it.
The fees would.
My licenses change every year.
The fee? The what?
Regarding.
The retroactivity.
For my business, my licenses change every year, why can't they change?
But like for hours, 30 hours.
See what the law says.
We don't think the ones that are already paid their fee this year, that we can do anything to those machines. But if they were to put another machine in, I think we are, the new would come in and then it could come in, like, put it in. There's a resolution, it's not going to happen tonight, but we'll vote on it, we'll talk about it. And we're thinking maybe October 1st, maybe best one.
Yeah, see what we can get together.
See what we can get together by then. And definitely, the new price will be for every machine starting the first of the year because it's a new year.
They won't be grandfathered because it will be.
Correct.
Correct, it'll be, because, yes, because it starts, it's a yearly thing.
Yes.
Everybody likes grandfather except when it comes to these things.
Yeah, no, that's not, and how's everybody feel about $1,000?
Burbishing.
Yeah.
And you're talking outside of clubs and bars.
Talking to everybody.
Yeah, that's, that was going to be my question, I would just be a little bit cautious or hesitant with the clubs that are giving a lot of money back to the community. I don't know how you carve them out, but.
And we're, I don't believe they're carved out in the.
No, no, I know they're, they're not currently, but I mean, before you, before you change it from 500 to 5,000 for a club that gives thousands back to the community, I just think that should be taken into consideration.
I don't know that you can, you can compartmentalize.
Yeah, and we've got to do something.
I know, I know.
Unfortunately.
That'd be a great idea, we're saving ultimate numbers.
I think the hours are key though, as you mentioned.
And we can't do hours.
A lot of our problems happen after midnight.
Yeah, and we can't do hours until we get a new, new ordinance. The only thing we can really do now is change what we charge. And how's everybody feel about $1,000? Elliot?
I'm hoping to.
Okay. Move with a resolution on that. Zoning permits.
We kind of hit on that already and looked at going to $50 for zoning permits.
Can I ask one question on the one, is the signs? I get calls on people's signs disappearing, like tree cutting or, I don't know.
They should disappear if they're in the right way or on a telephone.
Yeah, no offsite advertising, I mean, we.
Can you announce that publicly?
Yeah, we have no offsite advertising allowed unless you're going to work on the property. Like over at the four-way intersection here at the bowl on Beaver Drive, we get signs up there. We have to mow that, our guys are, they're grabbing them and taking them, and election, with the election coming up too, we're going to have signs everywhere. Keep them behind the sidewalk, it's a lot safer and it keeps us from having to run around and grab them.
So no signs or any odd businesses popped in the ground in the city?
But if I'm, if I'm cutting, if I'm cutting somebody's grass, I could have a sign there that day?
You could have a sign there if you do work on the property. If you cut that grass all summer long, you want to have a sign there, you can do it.
In their yard, but not in the right way, it had to be on the property side of the sidewalk.
Yes.
And it has to be less than six square feet.
Six square feet, yes.
Six square feet.
Okay, thank you, because I've had calls on their signs disappearing out on Beaver Drive, that's why.
They're going to disappear, they should disappear.
Yes, they just didn't know that is the case. Thank you. Thanks, Sean.
Property maintenance enforcement process.
So I did a little write-up there and I already kind of explained it, how I go about doing things, so I don't know, I mean, I don't really have a policy on how to handle everything, but that's how I've been handling it. Seems to work. Keeps me banging my head off the wall a lot.
You've been doing a great job, Zach, and I will say this, council is committed to cleaning up the, the city and property and as a homeowner, nobody wants to have somebody next door that devalues their property because they pile junk on it or don't mow the grass, it's just.
It's not fair to your neighbors.
Yeah.
Well, I want to get back to that question of, you know, do you have any, do you have any idea how much the fines are per year for the grass cutting in the snow? A number of people? I mean, I see, I look, I look at what you write each month and it's, it's got to be 20 or 30 every month, isn't it?
Yeah.
Easy. You know, that's how many of this stuff that he does and it's a lot of times the same people. So we're hoping to increase in the fines, stop such same people.
Report out of our system with how many fines have been put in, I don't have access to that.
Right, right.
That I can get that and let you know, but sometimes like if I don't know they come in and paid, the treasury will just put it in a general fine and it's not marked as a violation ticket.
Yes.
It all goes to the same place, but if they don't put it under the violation ticket.
Yeah, there's no way.
And I don't know what it was for, so I've been trying to keep track of a lot better, letting everybody just bring it to me and then I'll do it through my code enforcement system to keep track of it, so I have that number.
Yeah, and a lot of, a lot of the things he writes up, like I had, I had a relative that Zach wrote a.
Notice.
A notice on, and their tree was overgrowing an alley. Well, the snowplow can't get through, the garbage truck can't get through, so I went and, you know, chainsawed and, you know, and fixed that. And he didn't get, they didn't get a fine or anything, they just kind of noticed, just to be courteous and it just makes sense of safety for everybody, so.
Because I think a lot of people sometimes don't realize what is any ordinance is and what, you know, affects our workers.
Right, I wouldn't have known that, you know, I mean, I've been there many times and I didn't quite even see the tree, so, yeah, just taking care of. I hope that, that's about the best we can answer your question. I think that's the best we're going to be able to answer that question. Okay. So the property maintenance enforcement, it's pretty much the same way, Zach, I would think? And then blighted properties?
Yeah, you want to talk about that? In regards to a property survey? Blighted property inventory.
Inventory.
Yeah, the Keystone Core.
The Keystone Core. Yeah, right now, there's, there's a couple of things that we're doing. We're having, we're going to have Park Avenue from Maple Avenue to Brady Street and then Brady Street all the way out to the Sandy Bridge surveyed by a company. They're going to tell us, put us in an order and the ones that are the most blighted, we are going to get serious with. Okay, and there are certain things, and Jim, you look into some of this stuff about that, can you tell us a little bit?
Yeah, this company is a division basically of KIA Downtown on cleaning up properties, Keystone Core. They came into town, we walked through with them. They give us ideas on how to handle blighted properties. It's something that we are just looking into because there is a cost involved with it and as everyone knows, we are tight on money. But we really have some blighted properties coming into town that are on the main roads that really.
They've been there for years.
Don't make the city look great.
No.
So it's something that we're looking into and now we need to discuss this publicly, so that's what we're doing. To let you know that we are really looking at the blighted properties.
Do you want to move, that quote was, what was the quote?
I think we need to just hold on it for right now.
Okay.
Yeah.
$8,000?
Yes.
Yeah.
And then any additional properties was 250 after that.
Yeah, I think we just still need to discuss financials.
Okay, I'm fine on that. But, you know, one thing with blighted property, we have some employers that hire people from out of town because, you know, I mean, lots, look at the hospital. You know, they hire a lot of people from out of town and I've said this, you know, I just said this at the, at the chamber. You know, we're all from New Boys, and we know what it. the, at the chamber, you know, we're all from New Boys, and we know what a great place it is to raise kids and enjoy your life and work here and live here and, you know, be up here and there. But if you get somebody that they're trying to bring in, that they're trying to hire, it doesn't look real nice. I mean, they're used to driving in Boston and, you know, you know, other little towns or something like that, and New Boys doesn't look great. So we're working on gonna make it a better place, like, better place to live, but also a better, a better-looking place. It's, it's important. I'm gonna move into downtown trees. We are planning, actually, I was gonna ask council tonight. I'll ask them next, next time, I'll get, I'll get everybody a copy of that. But anyways, it's, it's trees, we're gonna, there's only, on Brady Street and Long Avenue, there's only like three or four places that we can actually plant a real tree, okay? A tree in a three-foot by three-foot hole doesn't, just, it's not sustainable, okay? So we're gonna get these big containers, about forty-two inches around and forty-two inches high, put a very small tree in them, put some flowers in them, it'll have some presence, and also do some hanging baskets, okay? It's a start, okay? It's a, it's a start in the right direction to make the downtown look a little bit better.
And that's all through money from where? It's not out of the, it's grants?
I haven't, I haven't seen a grant yet.
No, we're not, that was out of, we're not using any type of general fund money for the trees?
There's money in the budget for trees.
Well, besides that line item, we're not using any additional money?
No, other than the line item in the budget, no.
Okay.
So we might have to do it in a couple of stages over a couple of years, instead of just all at one time. I have two calls in for grants, you know, some help with some grants on that, and we'll see how those work out.
Okay.
Okay? Appointed and elected officials, inscriptions on memorials. Sean?
Yeah, I was approached by a couple council members with some concerns about employees, appointed officials, and elected officials' names on memorials. So really, just wanted to see if council wanted to do anything with a resolution to eliminate that practice, or if they're okay with that practice continuing, and that this would be just for specifically if tax dollars are involved in a project.
Yeah, if you wanna buy a bench for a loved one, that's not what we're talking about. We're talking about...
Using taxpayer...
We're gonna do a city building addition.
Yeah, yeah, we're building additions. Should you pay for a plaque to put my name on it? I don't think so.
Like the plaque outside of showers field to call it names?
You got it. Yeah.
Or the park benches.
Yeah, we just don't...
Yeah, taxpayer dollars shouldn't be spent on that, I'm sorry.
I agree.
So if you feel strongly about it, yeah, we would, we could draft a resolution to that effect.
How's everybody feel about that?
I'm a yes.
I think you have a good sense of that. Okay?
Are you talking about this day forward, or...
Right now, yes.
This day forward, okay. Not erasing what's already there.
We haven't discussed that, we haven't discussed that yet. We might.
So the ones that are there came out of city money?
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
There you go.
Jesus.
That's nice.
Grants, too.
What's that?
And grants, too.
Takes a lot of...
Still tax that money.
I mean, yeah, I mean, how are you just...
So the idea would be just eliminate all the...
There's much money to remove, because it does get removed.
Yeah, eliminate it. Even the ones, potentially, the ones that are already there, remove them.
Yes, potentially. Yeah, we haven't really talked about that yet.
We don't need to, that's just a policy.
Well, we have a resolution to make the official.
Approval to advertise for zoning hearing board members.
Yeah, we currently don't have any zoning hearing board members that are officially appointed, so we, we had two folks approach us about variances that they would need to go in front of the zoning hearing board, so we're seeking authorization to advertise for open zoning hearing board positions, specifically to handle these two variances that we think we're gonna see here in the near future.
You need a motion?
Oh, yeah, a motion would be great.
Okay. I'll make the motion to advertise for zoning hearing board members.
Second.
Property move second. Any questions on the motion?
Yes, have we taken the steps to amend the code for the, basically, that we need to reinstate the zoning hearing board?
We have not. There were concerns from the planning commission, and we have our legal folks looking into that. The planning commission didn't make a recommendation that we essentially hold off into consolidation because of the work involved in doing that. Additionally, they wanted to see just the conditional use followed through, the procedures followed through legally, so that was their recommendation.
I'd certainly not want to wait to consolidation to...
I don't think so.
How are we gonna hear the variances?
There are a few items that specifically call for the zoning hearing board to hear, and that's variances, so the, the two cases we're dealing with are, would be specifically variances in front of the zoning hearing.
That's correct. Yeah, I think we'll have, if we get, once we get word back from legal.
It was working much better going, using the SALDO ordinance and not the zoning, because there could be modifications, and it's a simpler process if it's used right. I've been following some of the things that absolutely come under zoning in the bigger area of Sandy Township, that are not really useful in three and a half square miles, where things have to be tighter, but that's, you know, that's your call.
Yeah, bottom line is legally, a variance has to be heard by the zoning hearing board.
It's my understanding we haven't had a zoning variance board for...
A long time.
Long time, right?
Right, it's, it's, yes. Yeah, a long time. I don't know exactly when. Been twenty years, ten years?
No, 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 it hasn't been that long.
No, not that long.
No, terms were just expired and people were never reappointed. I'm gonna guess about four years.
Oh, okay.
But it wasn't utilized. Right.
And the zoning, the zoning board still has functions that are pertinent to them, not to, not to planning and not to conditional uses.
Okay.
And modifications. You don't use modifications in zoning.
You're talking about under, under SALDO ordinance?
Under SALDO, you do.
Right.
But under zoning, you don't. And with our small, three and a half square mile area, modifications are very, very pertinent, useful, and so is SALDO. But I don't know why we did without planning commission, because they do have, I mean, zoning, because they do have a function.
Well, planning commission is, is legally speaking, advisory only.
Absolutely, and that's what's good, great about it, advisory only, because all the decisions are made with counsel.
Correct.
And that's the way...
But there's an independent review process that the planning commission does serve.
Yes, I suppose you have probably been involved, I have, in one board taking the others to court. It's not nice.
Thanks, Nancy.
No, federal court, and I am certified in all three courts. It's not pretty.
There has to be a, just a legal process to follow, and that's why we're doing the zoning.
Any other questions on the motion? Vote on the motion.
Dietz?
Yes.
Augenbach?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
Gelfen?
Yes.
Reesinger?
Yes.
Reappointment of redevelopment authority member John Yarker. Motion to approve?
Second.
Property move second. Any questions on the motion? I was on redevelopment, John's a good man. That's, that's my question.
How long have you been on redevelopment?
Oh, my goodness, twenty years? Was he before me?
Yeah.
I was on twenty-four years, so he's maybe thirty. Been on a long time. Yeah, it's, it's a nice board to be on, yeah. Any other questions on the motion?
Just, just, may I recommend appointment just through consolidation?
Okay.
Through December thirtieth, the thirty-first.
Sure, that's a very good point.
Motion amended?
Any questions on that motion? Okay, vote on the motion.
Dietz?
Yes.
Augenbach?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
Gelfen?
Yes.
Reesinger?
Yes. We're gonna go back to public comments. Yes?
Debbie Ackland again, Monroe Street. First of all, I'd like to commend you all on different items that were on the agenda tonight, that we've reviewed months ago, and it's nice to see an update on them, so that we know what's presently going on. I also wanted to acknowledge you addressing the blight issue, because the appearance of our community is important, as a visitor's perception of what our community values are, and we're not giving a good impression presently.
I agree.
And also, I hope that there is a discussion sooner than later on the personalized items in the park, because that's a real point of contention for a lot of our community.
What do you mean?
And then I did have one final...
What do you mean by the personalized items in the park?
The benches.
Oh, like the, like the plaques on the baseball field?
Yes.
No, 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 no.
No.
Names on the benches.
The names on the benches.
Oh, yeah.
By the waterfall.
If you look at the names on the front of benches and the, and the little saying on the back of the benches, it's kinda comical.
No, it's not comical, but...
I smiled, because wow, that's hard to believe. Yeah.
And then I did have one final question. With a high percentage of elderly in our area, what is the procedure for elderly who can't mow or shovel?
They really need, they really need to either have a neighbor do it, or they need to pay to have it done. You still need a safe sidewalk.
Are there agencies or anything that can be signed?
That would be really nice if we had that.
Churches are doing that.
Like scout troops or something?
It would be wonderful to do that, or a neighbor. I know, I've, I've done neighbors before, too.
Okay.
You said churches, man do it?
Sometimes churches do.
Yeah.
Because a lot of the elderly are afraid to reach out.
You used to have a list, but I do not have an active list anymore.
If there's, if there's anybody out there that, that has a volunteer group or something that will do that, could you please get it to the city of somebody that could shovel or snow blow or something like that, somebody that's not able to do it? And there's people that can't afford it, but it still has to be done. You can't have people falling on the sidewalks, you know, icy sidewalks and stuff. So if anybody has a list like that, or even a person, get it to the city, we'll get it to Zach, and if he runs into somebody, that'll be a name that he can give them, that'll help everybody.
Zach, I'll just give you that concern, if they give it to you, it's easy.
Do the kids still have to...
See what, see how wonderful New Boys is? Did you guys think of that?
Do students still have to do volunteer hours?
No.
No.
For CCB, they do.
Confirmation, they do.
National, that's not for us.
Yeah, get, get those names together, get them, get them to us and to Zach, yes.
Kristen Byda, Chestnut Avenue. Pat, in every meeting, you have made the comment that you can view the invoices on the website.
Yes.
We must not have a very friendly website, because I can never find them. Are they listed with, I don't see them.
I've never looked at them online, so I get them here.
I've never seen them under the government section, the, I mean, the department section. I've searched and...
We've talked about the website, not being...
I was told that they're there.
Okay, so I'm just curious, because I don't...
They're there, but we don't find them, is that it?
I mean, I use my app to, I mean, my phone to, so I was thinking maybe it's, I don't know.
I don't know the answer. I, I get the bills every two weeks, I get them given to me.
It's not visible what's on there?
Yeah.
Yeah, let's look.
It's not the most user-friendly.
It is not the most user-friendly website.
Kristen, if you're under city council meeting, where the agendas are high, and you scroll all the way down, registry invoices is right underneath.
Well, there you go. There we go. That's all.
Okay, it must be how I'm looking at it.
See how we help each other with New Boys?
Well, thank you, thank you, I apologize. Just regarding the blighted properties, is there a role for the RDA in condemning some of those blighted properties, maybe the ones that are more in a commercialized district?
That's where an RDA redevelopment authority comes in, and they can do things that the city can't do.
Correct.
Very easily, redevelopment is a wonderful tool, very, very wonderful tool. Shirley, you were on redevelopment, you were in charge of, I was on it, but I don't know the answer to that, to be honest with you, what the procedure is.
No, the redevelopment authority has the authority, they, like Pat was saying, they're able to do things that the municipality can't do, and even myself, as the downtown, they, they can get properties cleared, they can eminent domain, they have the ability to do things that the municipality...
When I was on redevelopment, we, we eminent domained one building, and that's the building that Hockman Candy's in right now. We did that, it took a long time, but it was done.
But that has to take you for public service, if you're gonna...
Redevelopment, redevelopment's something different. Yeah, if, if, if...
I'm talking about the city.
If the city was to do that, we have to have, if we have a project to do something, we can do eminent domain. We can't just do a blighted property eminent domain, but redevelopment can. And that's what, that's how that building was done, it was blighted.
And I just, again, with Debbie's comment, commend you all on the conversation with all of us here tonight on all these items.
No, that's why we're here. And everybody, it's been a joy to be at the meetings, like, the last few months, with all the comments and stuff like that, very positive. They're not all, we don't always have the good answer for you, but it's done in a very professional manner, we really, I really appreciate it. It's been very nice meetings. Anybody else have a comment? Yes, sir?
Leo Brooks, this is the fire chief. I'll get the fire department report for the month. I apologize, I wasn't here last month, I was here, but we actually have a house fire as I was sitting here.
That's more point.
But something I wanted to touch on that I, I was gonna bring up last month, we had a fire back on Canard Street about a month and a half ago, and I'm gonna brag a little bit. From the time we were dispatched to the time the fire was out, was less than twenty minutes. And I think it's just, to have a fire department that quick and efficient, I think citizens would be very proud. I mean, that's, that's phenomenal. So I just, I just wanted to bring that up first. Other stuff, we got a ward to save for grant a couple months ago, I mentioned that, we're doing a recruitment campaign. We do have a sign at Jeff, like, we were talking about the signs, they're kinda like the election signs, they're at the stations, and there's a banner over at the fire school. So far, that, we've got two people that have actually gone onto the website, here at check.org Other stuff, we, we got a ward to see for grant a couple of months ago, I mentioned that. We're doing a recruitment campaign. We do have signage up, like we were talking about the signs, they're kind of like the election signs, they're at the stations, and there's a banner over at the fire school. So far with that, we've got two people that have actually gone onto the website, here at check.org, and filled out a questionnaire, so I've reached out to them, so just waiting to hear back from them. So we're slowly getting potential new members in, so that, that program's actually working very well, so. We're doing touch a truck at Walmart September fourteenth. We're involved with that. Other things, at some point, we're doing forcible entry training with the, the police department. It was supposed to be this month, or we're going to do it next month. Third Ward has a forcible entry simulator door. When I was captain there, I was able to get that with state grant money a few years ago, and it's probably one of the most-used tools that we have, training tools. I mean, the younger guys like beating on it, so. It's the only one in, in this general town area. I think Brooklyn has one, but it's a pretty cool piece of training equipment. We did the Gosford Fire Study, we're here, I know Sean went with them, Chief Federici and Chief Runyon. They visited four stations, two in township, and they visited third ward and volunteers. By all accounts, they were pretty easygoing guys, pretty impressed with everything so far, so that's going well. As far as the nine-man fire committee subcommittee, we had Dave McClure from 911 Center, and the basic thing we talked about there is what frequency we're going to operate on. We gave some recommendations to the ten-man board, and they're going to, we're going to move forward with giving that recommendation to 911 and the, and the county commissioners, so that's, we're working with them. September twenty-fifth, we're going to be at Lawson School Career Day, I believe, fourth ward in Goodwill will be over there for that. We did have, which is pretty cool to see, we had ladder testing last week. They tested the big ladder on the ladder truck, and then all our ground ladders, which if you've never seen it done, the ladders, the ground ladder, they're shaped like a U almost. I mean, it's, it's amazing how they test them things, but there's a couple minor issues with the ladder truck, that's being addressed, so, but overall, that went really well. And we got two, two gentlemen. We have Lenny Federici, has fifty years in the department, which, like I said before, fifty years volunteering for the fire department, so that's a significant accomplishment. So that's great for Lenny. And then we have a junior firefighter, Jack Roy, he belongs a volunteer, he got Eagle Scout here last week, last weekend, it's two weekends ago, I guess. If you know Jack, he's a great, great kid, so if you see him, you know, congratulate him, that's quite an accomplishment for Jack, so, but that's it.
Any information on community days?
We did discuss it at our meeting. There is interest in bringing it back, so we're kind of in a reorganizational thing right now, so we should have, I'd say about a month, we should have some concrete details, I would say.
Okay.
But it's, it's being discussed seriously.
Okay. And anybody from the, from, involved in DuBois Day, any?
We discussed options working with them, so...
They did a great job with the music.
Yeah. So, I mean, once we decide what we want to do, I mean...
Can you keep us...
Yeah.
Posted on that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think the quicker the decision's made, the better.
I, I don't know if you know this answer or not, but when it comes with the consolidation and the ISO rating, do we have to be like, because I know the township has a rating and the city has a rating, like, will they just come under the city and it will all be rated the same, or do you have to reas...
When I met with the, we met with the guys, it was a couple months ago, the township, I believe, is a three...
It's, even in the township, we have a split rating.
Okay.
So I'm sure the city and the consolidated city will have a split rating.
No, it's actually, when we talked to the guy, he said, he will, the ISO guys, we will start all over as like a brand-new department. So more than likely, I mean, I don't know, I'm not sure what it'll be, if it's a one or two, or, I mean, two are the worst, I would guess. But yeah, it's, they, they, we asked about the split rating, the one guy, and he said no, because they used to do it like that, but there's, well, the way ISO is now, there's a new parent company above them, and I guess they're pretty, they're pretty strict, because insurance companies, they don't want to...
They should be.
They want to pay out.
Right.
But, yeah, it'll, it'll probably change, so.
Thank you.
Yeah. Denny Scrub, West Second Avenue, here in DuBois. I'm just touching base on the music fest in the park.
I've heard good things.
Thank you. This past Thursday night was the last concert. We had nine concerts total, we took one off for the Fourth of July because it fell on Thursday, did want to conflict with the festivities going on in Broadway, which I think is a good thing to do. The weather cooperated fantastically, I mean, just, you couldn't ask for nicer weather. And I want to thank the council and all the city workers and everything that came together and makes this all happen. It isn't only me, you know, there's a lot of other people in the city that, that really do a lot more. Corby helps me out a lot, she gives me telephone calls every once in a while, it's good to hear your voice. Elaine Askin's over here from the courier, makes me look good. So anyhow, for the, the money that was allotted for the concert this year, I was two thousand seven hundred and five dollars under what you's allotted, all right? So that gives you some more money to spend somewhere else.
Thank you.
Okay?
We'll put it in the pension.
You know, a lot of the people in this area, they really look forward to these concerts. I get a lot of good comments on it and stuff. The one that really stood out to me, one of the best ones, was the Sinatra concert. I was down at Martin's the Saturday afterwards, I had this younger gentleman, probably twenty-three years old, I'm guessing, or something, he came up to me, said, "Are you the guy that does the stuff in the park for the music?" I said, "Yes." He said, "Well," he wanted to thank me, all right? So I really appreciated that with his positive comment. And he also said that with the Sinatra concert, that how much he enjoyed it, and especially the band behind John Noble, you know, he said it was so great to hear all that brass and everything. Now, this is a, you know, a young guy that's probably, as far as I'm concerned, wants to hear strumming on guitars and stuff, and he's telling me about the band down there, you know, so I thought that was really fantastic. So I just want to tell you that if you want me to do it again next year, I'm on board, you guys talk it over. I did already talk to Dan Wallace as far as Wallace Sound provides the sound in the park for whatever group wants it. There are some groups that prefer to use their own sound, so he's on board if we want him. So that's my presentation, thank you very much.
Thank you, great job.
Thanks.
Always a great crowd when I drove by on Thursdays.
And you like... Yes, sir.
Yeah, Barry Abbott. One of the things on fire at our consolidation meeting that people here may have missed is the cooperation between Sandy and the city on the communications. I believe it was unanimous, and I, I think it did wonderful for the development of the new fire company, new city as we move forward.
Yes.
I'm just tickled pink that I saw that cooperation, so I just wanted to bring it up for the people that are in our audience tonight that may have missed that consolidation meeting, and to our fire departments, both in Sandy and the city, I applaud you. Thank you. Thanks for giving me the time.
Yes. Anybody else? Anything to say about our sewer system? Okay. That's going along. All right, we're going to, we're going to close that part, but thank you, appreciate it. Council member comments? Jim?